Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee Meeting to order on February 16th at 11:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org, under People, under Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that the board meeting, that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you now please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
President.
Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jelena Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you. We are now going to proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will have Trustee Grande lead us.
Thank you. If everyone would like to join me by placing your right hand over your heart. Ready? Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I do have a very short president's report. And I always try to think of what is I'm going to say, and usually I am in advance of, in advance of the meeting. But usually, what comes, what it comes down to is, on my walk before this meeting, lots of ideas come into play. And so there are some things that I have been thinking about relative to the moments that we are in. And I'm going to focus in on the five to eight million Californians with some college. That is sort of the population in particular that Calbright has focused in on. And that the, the whole, that this whole college is being sort of built around. And what it is that they need as adults who are, in many, in many respects, a number of women, folks of color, they are working, they are with children. And so we've said, I've said it before, but we've said it before among us, that we have to be building this with them in mind. We are also in this moment of time of increasingly fast change. Some of that is for the good, some of that not so much so. And I say that because one of the things we are asking ourselves, ourselves as members of this board, ourselves as employees and staff of Calbright, is to think beyond the box, to do things differently, to sometimes step out in situations that are uncomfortable because we're not used to them. And, and to, to work in those spaces. And I think it's really important that we do that. That, that uncomfortable place is actually where we, we absolutely need to be. And we need to be questioning, I'm not saying that we sort of do it without, without questions and, and without dialogue. But the act of being uncomfortable is where sometimes our very best work happens. The other thing I would, I would say is, we have to listen. We have to listen to what adult learners are telling us. And they're, and sometimes they're telling us by stopping out. And in some cases, they're, they are, they are stopping out, and they are not likely to return if things do not change. We also have to listen to what our employers in our business classes telling us as well. And who it is and what skills they need in order to be successful. And we need to do that in timeframes that as educational institutions and as folks who are in educational systems are uncomfortable with because we have been driven by, by process. And I'm not suggesting that process is wrong, but we have to move a lot more quickly and intentionally to make changes. We've also lived, live within institutions that have shied away in many cases and feared making mistakes. And we've got to kind of get over that piece, too. If you make a mistake, it doesn't mean that all has failed. There's a process of learning from that mistake. And then, and learning from it and adding that knowledge to the next process that we have to go through. I say that as someone who took 16 years to get through two institutions and another eight years to get connected to my, to a postgraduate program. I, I say that from the vantage point of having two children along the way, in which my son went off to college when I went off to graduate school. That's how long it took. And I say that because last week I listened to a young woman who started her community college education in 2003. And was happy and joyous that she was now almost on the edge of transferring to a CSU to finish her education, which she wanted to go into education. I want to celebrate with her because she has made, she has, she has, she's beat the numbers. She's beat the numbers. But she didn't beat the numbers because we helped her do that. She beat them because within her, she had folks who supported her, and she kept coming back. She took that one or two classes. But we have to fix that. That, that is devastating to a system that really needs to be thinking about who our students are and what it is they need, and then make changes institutionally that addresses that. And it's not just about, it's not just about the courses, but the financial requirements of coming and staying within our systems. And so, I guess I'll end this by saying, we've got to make certain that every time we're making decisions, every time we're in a, in a discussion, we are addressing our fears, moving forward, and thinking about who we are here to serve. And with that, I want to thank you for your time, and I want to ask our, our president CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. Month over month, we are continuing to take very powerful strides forward at Calbright, not only developing new systems and programs, but also revisiting those that are up and running with a close eye for improvements that are going to better serve and support our students, the students that Pam is talking about. Later today, we will provide an update on the iterations and revisions we've made to our CRM program, which come at a very critical time as enrollments grow from 30 students in the summer to more than 180 students today. From updating material within the curriculum to adding new hands-on projects that help our students actually learn and apply the skills that they've acquired. Our learning and instruction team has been very hard at work, not only helping students master that material, but also ensuring that it is the most up-to-date and effective content available. We've also developed better backend systems so that we can see in real time the progress that students are making. And so that as we continue to grow, we can identify the trends where students may experience a difficult module. We can track the outcomes of interventions like outreach from a tutor or support from career services. And those are the kinds of things that, that responsiveness is the thing that our, our student learners need the most. Our new Vice President of Engineering joined the team in January, and he is quickly getting up to speed. His focus right now is on deep review and evaluation of Calbright's technology across the college. And this is a really important point because everything in our technology infrastructure, everything from our learning management system to the student portal, to our support platforms, our technology team has to always have a very balanced focus on today's needs, but also getting ahead of assessing the technology needs of the college that lay the groundwork for long-term, sustainable, and high-quality growth with the expansion of our operational capacity. On this front, I'm looking forward to celebrating and sharing more updates about our progress, but also our decision-making in the months ahead. Earlier this month, I was thrilled to introduce the launch of our partnership with SEIU UHW to develop a training program focused on licensed vocational nurses. Programs like this, those that really combine and connect California's educational and workforce infrastructure, are vital as we collectively expand the pipeline of frontline healthcare professionals across the state. Very simply put, there aren't enough frontline healthcare workers in training programs in California to solve this problem at scale. So oftentimes, we see that private for-profit players enter the market. They offer programs that leave students saddled with debt for a credential they could receive with minimal cost at a public institution. And though there's a need for healthcare workers across the state, it's really acutely felt in certain parts of our state, in very underserved regions, in the Central Valley, in Inland Empire, and in rural counties that are up and down California. Calbright's statewide, fully online model can engage learners who may not have had the ability to participate in traditional training programs. And SEIU UHW's leadership in the field really allows us for diverse locations to get to the hands-on clinical training that's needed. As we seek to develop this program, we're going to share also a lot of what we're learning with our sister campuses openly and freely as we work together to solve some of these shared challenges. Lastly, I'd like to quickly share an update about college-wide enrollment. Over the weekend, Calbright surpassed our mission, our mark with 900 students, an 87% increase from the summer. And critically, as our enrollment climbs, our mission continues to shine brightly through our student body. I want to pick up on Pam's point here about how it's important to seat our students at the head of the table, to listen to them. Calbright was created to serve Californians who have fallen through the cracks of our traditional education systems, those who are unemployed or working dead-end jobs, those who are seeking to make a career change or need more training to allow them to succeed at work or earn a promotion. New student data from Calbright's application process is very illuminating in this regard. Nearly half of our student body is either unemployed or working multiple jobs to make ends meet. Nearly a third of our students, one in three, are responsible for dependent care. One in three nearly are experiencing a job loss, a reduction in hours that's creating a very new and acute economic pressure in their lives. And when we asked our students why they were interested in enrolling at Calbright, nearly 90% have responded that that's our, that it's our model, that it made that their desired program accessible. 78% cited our focus on skills-based training programs, and 64% shared that Calbright's affordability was vital to their ability to enroll. While these numbers are compelling, what I want to point out is that they actually reflect the goals of real people. You know, of students like Hector, who was a DACA recipient from San Pedro, who enrolled in our IT support program, and after graduating, found a job in a robotics company. Each of our students brings with them their own unique experiences, their own histories. They bring with them their personal and professional goals. And they're seeking, you know, they're telling us what they're seeking. They're seeking to make a better life for themselves and their families. I know for all of you and as well as for myself, it's really an honor for us to be a part of their journey, a responsibility. And I look forward to sharing more of their stories with you in the months to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Minion. So before we start, I've been informed that some speakers and presenters will be joining us at different parts of our agenda. And hence, I propose that we take the agenda out of order. We've already had the, we've already had the, my report, and we've had President Minion's report. So the consent items and the information items are differently. Hopefully, you got the email that sort of outlined that. So we will, I'm asking for a motion to, to take the items out of order for this particular meeting. Are there any questions before we, we go to a, an approval of that, or disapproval of that? I don't see any. So can I get a, a motion and a second?
Agüinaldo, I'll move.
Moved by Agüinaldo, and may I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. This is going to, this is, so we now are at the consent agenda. And one of the items, 3.4, which is the resolution for reconsideration, as of this morning, there is an update. So what I would like to do is to move to pull 3.4 for discussion. But prior to that, I would like to take the, the remaining consent items, which is 3.1, which is the minutes from December the 29th, 3.2, which is February 3rd, the Board of Trustees' meeting minutes, and 3.3, which is also on the consent personnel, personnel items, and vote on that as consent items. And then in pulling 3.4, we will have a discussion on what that update is, and then vote on that separately. So with that, can I get a motion to do that?
So move.
All right. Bill Rawlings.
Yep.
And a second.
Agüinaldo, I'll second.
So I have.
Perry should go.
Perry. As a second, would you please call the roll on the consent of 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. So there has been an update to, to AB 361, and I'm going to have legal counsel Cynthia Smith to apprise us what those, those changes are before. And then we'll have some discussion if, if that's the case, and then vote on that separately.
Thank you, President Haynes and Vice President Costa and members of the Executive Committee. The reason why item 3.4 was pulled from the consent agenda today is because this morning, hot off the presses, Sacramento County Health Officer rescinded the order issued on January 6, 2022, that required all public meetings within Sacramento County be held by a teleconference. So since one location of Calbright's in-person public meetings occurs in Sacramento County, reference to this order was included in Resolution 2022-03, which is proposed for approval today. However, the provisions of AB 361 in the state of emergency as a result of COVID-19 remain in place. Thus, the board still has the discretion to approve Resolution 2022-03 to hold its meetings by a teleconference. For all of the other rationales discussed in the resolution, which may create increased risk for attending in-person meetings, especially for those who may be immunocompromised, and those include the fact that the members of the board and the executive committee would be required to travel from all areas of the state and across multiple counties in order to attend a Calbright public meeting, and that mask mandates for unvaccinated individuals are still in place. And since members of the public are not required to be vaccinated in order to attend public meetings, it would be impractical and difficult to check vaccination statuses and enforce mask mandates with limited staff members. In addition, the Board of Governors, as a statewide entity, will be holding its March meeting by a teleconference in accordance with the more flexible provisions of the Bagley-Kean Act, which applies to state bodies, not our body, at the local body, which were extended through March via the Governor's Executive Order issued in January of 2022. So in summary, the board may approve Resolution Number 2022-03 today, but we would recommend that the motion to approve the resolution would be to approve it as amended to remove the references to the Sacramento County Health Order that has now been rescinded. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have about this.
Um, board members, do you have, do we have questions regarding it? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Is there, do we have to ask for public comment on this since we've pulled it out? Then is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
All right, then, then can I get a motion to approve as stated, which is to amend the resolution? As stated by our legal counsel, in a second?
So move.
All right, we have Epstein moving. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
We have Rawlings second. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you so much for your patience with the changes that are, they're sort of happening in the midst of everything. So we will now move to items, information and report items, and start with item 5.1, which is an overview presentation of the Vocational Nursing Program. And we have Pam Sandborn to present on this item.
So just a quick. I believe it's Mike Michael Younger reporting on this item.
Sorry. Didn't have your, I didn't have your name.
No, no problem at all. So, good morning, Madam President, Madam Vice President, and members of the board. I'm excited to be before you today for the first time as the Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation at Calbright College. Today, I will introduce Calbright's intention to develop California's first online competency-based vocational nurse training program, which supports the incredible need for an expanded LBN pipeline in California, and aligns with the Governor's most recent budget announcement to increase the number of licensed vocational nurses by way of his comprehensive nursing initiative. We're also honored to be joined today by our strategic partner in this development effort, the Service Employees International Union, United Healthcare Workers West, also known as SEIU UHW, which is a healthcare justice union of more than 100,000 healthcare workers, patients, advocates, healthcare consumers united to ensure high-quality care for all Californians. You'll hear more from our incredible partner shortly. Next slide. Thank you. So in California, like many states across the country, LBNs are in high demand due to a number of simultaneous events, including high turnover even prior to the pandemic, the actual pandemic and impacts of the pandemic in aging population and staff shortages, which has led to California being one of the lowest patient-to-nurse ratios in the country. The ratio for California currently stands at 9.25 nurses per every 1,000 patients. Next slide. As it relates to turnover, with a 42% LBN turnover rate in 2020, and the limited supply of licensed vocational nurses across California at less than 6,000 graduates over the past year, and tens of thousands of job openings, the California LBN workforce has struggled to keep up with demand. However, the turnover phenomenon predates the pandemic as reflected in a 2019 NSI Nursing Solutions National Survey, which indicates that of the 420,000 healthcare workers surveyed, 27% of new hires left the healthcare industry within just the first year. The need for an innovative learning and development program, especially those that invest in the growth and professional development of employees, can lead to better retention and reduce turnover, lowering the overall cost of talent recruitment. Next slide. So worker, workers have expressed concerns about the pandemic's effect on the workforce, whether it be widespread staff shortages, limited supply of masks and personal protective gear, a lack of COVID testing, mental health services, or inadequate contact tracing efforts. All of this contributed to the increased risk faced by healthcare workers. According to the Kaiser Family Foundation, well over 3,000 US healthcare workers perished in the first year of the pandemic, and the largest percentage of deaths were from nurses at 32%, followed by healthcare support at 20%. Additionally, 2/3 of deaths were identified as people of color, revealing the deep inequities tied to race, ethnicity, and economic status in America's healthcare workforce. Lower-paid workers who handled everyday patient care, including nurses, support staff, nursing home employees, were far more likely to be impacted, and in some cases, die during the pandemic. There's a growing urgency among both workers and labor organizations to address these inequitable trends by building stronger partnerships that highlight worker voice with industry leaders and community partners, but also supporting workers in transition to change occupation, build new skills, match to new jobs, and helping build skills to prepare for the jobs of the future, including skills like critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, as noted in the California Future of Work Commission Report. Next slide. California faces an increasing demand for LBNs in a multitude of healthcare settings. Over the past year, there were approximately 33,000 unique entry-level job postings for LBN physicians primarily in hospitals, home healthcare services, assisted living, and long-term care facilities, as well as skilled nursing facilities. That represents a six-to-one ratio of, for California job posting to qualified LBN graduate. In the Inland Empire, the need is much greater at seven-to-one ratio. And in the Capital Region, which includes the counties of Alpine, Palooza, El Dorado, Glen Placer, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba, the gap deepens significantly to a 57-to-one ratio to job posting to qualified graduate. These jobs offer a median salary range between 53,000 and 69,000, depending on region within California. And over a 10-year projected jobs analysis, they will grow. The job of, the demand will grow by 15%, which is much higher than the 9% national average for LBNs, according to the US Bureau of Labor Statistics. So the LBN profession's high demand will only continue while serving as a gateway into high-demand healthcare professions like registered nursing, which in 2021 had a, had job openings in the amount of 164,000 across the state. So institutions training the next generation of LBN professionals in California simply cannot keep up with current and forecasted demand. Next slide. The silver tsunami, which is a metaphor used to describe population aging, has been a term associated with the healthcare industry for some time now. And projections from the US Census Bureau point to 2030 as a milestone year in which the older population will actually outnumber children for the first time in history. Census Bureau data also estimates that one in every five Americans will be at retirement age by that year. That means it's imperative for healthcare organizations, from solo practitioners to big practices, hospitals, health systems, and insurance companies, to start prepping now for what will inevitably be a transformative demographic shift. In California, nearly 26% of current LBN, from the current LBN workforce, is at or nearing retirement age, which combined with the existing staff shortages will produce the largest void in staffing, knowledge transfer, and experience on record. Next slide. Health disparities stubbornly persist across diverse patient populations. And although the nursing profession has implemented various strategies, a key tool to reducing health disparities among underserved. a key tool to reducing health disparities among underserved population involves diversity in nursing. Patients who see themselves represented in the nursing staff are likely to be more transparent, more competent in their treatment, and more willing to engage in recommended plans of care. This is all, this is, this all, this helps improve the patient outcomes. As the gateway role to RN, registered nursing, efforts to diversify the licensed vocational nursing workforce will have a positive impact, right, on the registered nursing workforce, where currently LBN to RN representation for Hispanic and Latino drops from 30.4% in the LBN workforce to 17.4% in the registered nursing workforce. And those numbers are more drastic when it is concerning Black and African-American, which sees a drop from 14.1% to 6% in the LBN, or excuse me, in the registered nursing workforce. So there's great opportunities to leverage LBNs to diversify moving forward to registered nursing as well. Next slide. So at this time, I would like to introduce Gustavo Medina, Assistant Director of SEIUUHW, to share a few words about our groundbreaking partnership. Gustavo?
Thank you, Michael. President, Vice President, and members of the board, thank you for having us. And we're, I can't stress enough how thrilled we are about this partnership. SEIUUHW is committed to providing affordable, accessible, and high-quality care. And, and we strongly feel that this, this partnership will help advance California's healthcare infrastructure while investing in a sustainable workforce that meets the state's healthcare needs. I think we're all very well aware of how abundantly clear it's become that we have a healthcare worker shortage. That's what this pandemic has done. Our members have been reporting a tremendous amount of stress due to the long hours that they've had to put in, extra shifts that they've had to cover, because there just aren't enough workers. In addition, as we know, some workers have been retiring, some workers have been walking away because of the tremendous amount of stress. But something that we've known, and I, I, I know that others have known as well, is that this workforce shortage pre-existed the pandemic. The pandemic made this abundantly clear, exacerbated the problem. But we've known that this has been an issue for a while, which is why this is something that, for UHW, SEIUUHW, we, we have been thinking about how to tackle this, this workforce shortage. And this partnership with us, with Cal-Bright is one way to go about that. The collaboration between Cal-Bright and SEIUUHW is really an example of how to take an innovative approach to address the needs of the healthcare workforce and doing it in a way that is, is allow students to succeed, given the fact that it's a self-play, self-paced, excuse me, online learning program, which is incredibly critical, as, as we all know, for working adults who must oftentimes juggle work and family responsibilities. So I, I want to keep this brief. I, I can't stress enough how excited we are about this partnership. This is, this is an absolute way to go about addressing the healthcare worker shortage, while also allowing people to upskill. A lot of times we talk about bringing in healthcare workers. This is a way to help workers who are in the profession upskill and earn a livable wage to provide for themselves and their, and their families. So again, on behalf of SEIUUHW and our 100,000-plus members, we're thrilled to be a partner in this, in this program and looking forward to advancing it. Thank you.
Incredible, incredible words. So thank you so much, Gustavo, and to SEIUUHW as well. Next slide. So this LBN training program will be Cal-Bright's first ever, as stated. And so, or excuse me, California's first ever online competency-based and licensed vocational nurse training program. Our high-quality CBE model offers the flexibility for learners to fit coursework into their schedules as we focus on high-touch support services and on subject mastery versus time in classroom. We're also exploring the virtual and mobile simulation labs, which show nursing students what it is like to be in a real-world clinical setting and what problems and risks they may encounter there. And thus, will, will help them develop skills, build confidence, and prepare for the actual clinical practice. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge this board for your approval to recruit a full-time instructor supporting the new LBN program, which will be key to the success of both our instruction and program design. This role is now posted, and we look forward to a competitive talent pool. Additionally, we've onboarded a very accomplished subject matter expert whose past experience as a vocational nursing program instructor and director of nursing will provide a high level of expertise. She also holds a bachelor's in nursing and a master's in nursing education. Her contributions will be invaluable to support the current program development stage. So thank you again, and I look forward to answering your questions today.
So thank you so much for that presentation. I'm looking to the board. I see that Board Member Grande has her hand up.
Thank you, President Haynes, and thank you, Michael and Gustavo, for your presentation. I was wondering if you might be able to provide us with a little bit of context regarding the pathway out of an LBN program to a RN program, as well as a, a point of reference for the number of our community colleges that already provide a credit-based LBN program?
That, that's a great question. And so although this program does focus specifically on LBN, the, the natural pathway would be to registered nursing. And so we will have a greater discussion in this development stage to make those connections, both as a resource and a continuation of their learning and education in the knowledge economy. And as it relates to your, your question, your other question regarding program-specific, so it's, it's a great question. And I'd like to take just a moment to kind of give the landscape. I think our, our president shared kind of, you know, kind of where we are in terms of a public institution being able to help this shortage need for the state of California. So in the state of California, there, 32% of LBN programs reside in community colleges. That means that, you know, almost 70% reside in public schools, occupational centers, and/or adult education. And what we've seen is that as we look at the, you know, applications that are pending and things of that nature, there's great opportunity to have public institution representation moving forward for a number of reasons, right? One, being the impact to the student and that cost element. Two, being able to, be able to level the playing field between public and private school institutions as well. And so, you know, it's, it's a good time for Cal-Bright to introduce this program to impact the great need that we see in the marketplace.
I, I just want to follow up with a commentary from a point of reference of a community college that has a registered nursing program. We would love to extend the number of people we could have in our programs, both vocational nursing, psychiatric technology, registered nursing. But we are hamstrung by our clinical sites and not being able to have enough clinical sites. So I really do hope in the development of this program, we can reach out to traditional training centers that haven't already previously entered in to an agreement with a community college, so that we might be able to expand the number of clinical sites that are available and place these LBN students in their communities, so that they might be able to get the training they deserve.
I, I would love to double down on the, the point of emphasis, Jolena, because this is a net positive on the opportunity for expanding clinical placement opportunities at a place and time across the array of potential job roles within the allied health industry. And so I think we are both excited about the partnership with SEIUHW because of that net opportunity, but also because it provides a different entry point and a diverse entry point for folks in, into the profession that can eventually track into a number of the other types of programs that are available at community colleges, including at the RN level. So reviewing this piece of it as unlocking a lot of shared challenges down the road and hopefully in the nearer term that our community colleges in the system are facing. And Michael's point about the share of the market that the public sector holds versus the private sector in terms of training providers, that's such a critically important point to the point that you're making, because it is the place where a lot of the competition for clinical placement opportunities gets sucked up. And so not to go down that this rabbit hole too much, but I do think, and I look forward to supporting, encouraging, and lifting up other fellow community colleges who are seeking to, to seek approval on their coursework across a number of these different, these different provisions and roles at the licensing level as well.
Thank you for that. Vice President Costa.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for bringing this to us today. And I think, you know, Mr. Younger, you said it, this is the promise of Cal-Bright, the ability to be nimble and to bring things forward in a timely manner. And there was recently a video editorial in the New York Times about the crisis in nursing right now coming out of the pandemic. And so this is so incredibly well timed. Kudos. I'm really excited about this. Thank you.
Member Aguinaldo.
Thank you, President Haynes. I just wanted to also extend my, my hearty congratulations to the staff and to the newer stakeholders involved with, with getting this partnership before us. My question is, as to the presentation itself, it looks like there's a lot of discussion on how there is such a high demand for healthcare workers, and we all know that. How are we thinking about supply issues?
Who are you directing that, that question to, I think?
Anyone who wants to answer. I think Ajita started, but she was on mute, so I just.
Michael has the answer.
Yeah, please.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. We have focused kind of on the demand side of things. I think as we look at the supply across the board, it speaks to President CEO's comments regarding partnerships, education, that, you know, our opportunity to pilot up to 100, you know, in, in, you know, in this original assessment or pilot, if you will, I will provide a great deal of insight to existing programs and sister colleges, right, to be able to either amend, adjust, or be able to move forward with their, their programs in a, in a better, new, new, innovative way. So the supply being the 6,000, it's a great shortage to be able to address. And I think that that's where it comes, where we're sharing information and being able to leverage learning, doing, you know, joint partnerships down the line in terms of thought leadership and, and being able to, to have greater partnerships as we move forward. So it's a great need. I think this is not a solving of the need. It's an addressing the need and doing it in an expedient way, in a, in a, innovative, innovative way. And then hopefully we're leveraging that opportunity to share across the sister colleges and the state of California in terms of our approach.
Are there any other questions or comments on this item? Oh, uh, member, um, Jennifer, sorry.
Jennifer. I know. All of us could use an extra cup of coffee this morning for whatever reason. So I just want to underscore what, what Member Costa said. I mean, I think this, this new program is really emblematic of the kind of groundbreaking and pivotal programs that Cal-Bright can create, being, being able to pivot and address and flexible enough. So I think it, it marks a real turning point. And I also think it's worth highlighting what the president said earlier that we're at 900 students. So I think this is, this is a very good beginning to, to the year. But again, I just want to commend the staff and the leadership for using what Cal-Bright does best to create a program that addresses a significant need and for so aptly demonstrating and clearly demonstrating that need and the differences we'll also make in terms of diversifying the health force in California. So kudos to all of you.
So I have a hand up from Board Member Epstein.
Thanks. Yeah, this is for Mr. Medina. The, is SEIU going to provide their members who want to get an LBN credential as a pipeline of students for us? Or how, how is the, how, how is that relationship, you know, going to bring in, you know, your, your members? Absolutely. I, I think that, that'll be one, one option to, to help fill the, the slots that'll be available. And, and we, we have a, a proven, we've started to have a proven record of, of bringing in recruiting people into healthcare workforce. For example, I didn't touch into this because I wanted to be brief, but we, we have a sister organization called Fudula Health, and they're really responsible for bringing in new healthcare workers into the healthcare field. And what our members have done is they have recruited their friends and their families to attend orientations online through Zoom, and we've had hundreds of people attend, again, through Zoom. So that shows that the demand is there, that there is an absolute need to, to provide people with opportunities. That being said, we also have, like I said, 100,000 members, and many of whom are looking to upskill. And that's something that we want to provide opportunities for, for people, for workers who want to rise within their profession, of course, make a livable wage, or rise up in the economic ladder. And that's something that, that we absolutely will be doing, is we know who, who's interested in upskilling and different routes. LBNs is one of them, and this is something that we absolutely will be talking to our members about. Great, thanks.
So thank you for that. I'm going to add my, my comments here. So VP Younger and Assistant Director Medina, I just want to thank you so much for being steadfast and working together to provide this particular program, which is near and dear to my heart, because I've worked on it with, with Los Rios Community College District. But this is, these are new steps. And, and I truly appreciate this, this partnership of coming together and building it, and then being able ultimately to share, to share in what we've learned, and, and, and to do that in partnership for, for the betterment of the whole. And so I can't thank you enough and tell you just how groundbreaking this is. And I look forward to future reports on the progress, not only of the program, but of the adult learners that are, that are in the program. So I want you to be able to come back with stories of, of the successes, because what I have found over the years, it is in the storytelling of someone's experience and what it means to them and their children and their families of having an opportunity to be in a program that makes such a critical difference in their lives. So with that, this is an information item, and we're going to move on to 5.2, which is a CRM program update, and we have Tamika Connors, who is Senior VP for Strategic Initiative. So Tamika?
Thank you, President Haynes, and good morning, Board, Members of the Board. In spring of 2021, Cal-Bright launched a transition to tech customer relations management administration program. Next slide, please. With a pilot cohort of 50 students, we use this pilot to track and monitor the student experience from application through completion. Over the next several months, our CRM cross-functional team reviewed data to make continuous improvements to the program. Today's presentation features some of the program enhancements to the program. Next slide, please. Let's start by defining what is customer relationships management. CRM is a software program used to store, organize, and share customer data to create automated processes to enhance relationships with customers, donors, and other stakeholders. According to business.com, 91% of companies with more than 11 employees use CRM software in 2021. Salesforce is the market leader and supports over 150,000 organizations, nonprofits, and institutions. Next slide, please. So for our CRM program, we. So for our CRM program, we developed Facebook and Instagram ads, a video, and a flyer for the CRM program, which offers a value proposition to potential learners by explaining how anyone with an interest in technology can transition into the CRM market. The CRM video showcases market opportunities on how baseline customer service skills can translate very well. And it's now embedded in our landing page and shared on organic social media platforms. We have an alternative version with closed caption as well, and it cuts down to 15 to 30 seconds. We also have a flyer with updated imagery and content, and it's now trackable using a QR code so that we know where our traffic is coming from. Next slide, please. The process laid out on this slide moves us from left to right. First, we have our landing page, which allows us, again, to track student traffic and proactively outreach to students who are stuck in the application process. We also have an email drip campaign and a live onboarding session once students are enrolled. This is important because we are often explaining the opportunity to prospective students in a field that they may be unfamiliar with. We're communicating with them the potential value of the program and our knowledge economy. We're also introducing them to our institution and preparing them for the support they may need through the application process, as well as easing their entry into their program of study. A key part of our admissions and enrollment process is the proactive outreach by our student support specialists, who reach out to students, sometimes even before they've completed the application, to help answer any questions they may have. They proactively connect students with support services so that they can be aware of what's available to them and help empower them to reach out before they get to a roadblock so that we can work through these issues together. The landing page has been improved with a UX and content design, providing additional context about Calbright and the professional opportunities available in the marketplace. It is mobile-friendly, and it's live onsite currently. We combined our prior messaging to streamline the number of emails sent to students. We reformatted our messaging to make the information more student-friendly by highlighting areas of focus and action items. We are also leveraging live onboarding sessions with our counseling faculty and student support specialists. These sessions include hands-on introduction to literacy skills, and we also walk students through how to log on to the LMS, how to log on to Student Slack, how to utilize Zoom, et cetera. We've also created some technological enhancements that occur in the live onboarding to help students receive their devices, which through our learner library sooner. So students can indicate in the live onboarding session whether or not they need a loaner computer or a hotspot. Next slide, please. Not only are we easing the process to enter a program with a feeling for the students that they can succeed, they can do this, it's also about building community to foster student support and also help expose students to tools that they'll use in the workplace. Our student community is built in Student Slack, which is a digital communication tool used in the workplace, especially within the knowledge economy. What started with the test in the CRM program has now grown into a college-wide endeavor to build stronger digital literacy, I'm sorry, digital student communities that create the conditions of success for students. Slack is a powerful messaging tool that integrates with Salesforce, which is where much of our student interaction data is captured. It's also Calbright's main messaging platform to students. Our students are able to ask for help, provide feedback to the faculty, engage with other students, schedule appointments with tutors and career services, and stay up to date about college news and events. Next slide, please. Just as important to all the upfront student support, Career Services is also embedded throughout our programs to prepare students for their end goal, which is getting a job or obtaining a better job. So from the beginning of their academic journey, we offer a variety of workshops, guest speakers, and networking opportunities with industry professionals. For the CRM program, we have offered a workshop on Ask Me Anything from CRM industry professionals to a Q&amp;A session on Salesforce and CRM as a professional opportunity, job search strategies, as well as state and federal job search basics, and tailored resume and cover letter workshops. Next slide, please. So you may be wondering, how else do we foster community and student success? To create a sense of community and belonging is essential to student persistence and completion. Counselors have implemented Connection Cafe, a monthly opportunity for peer engagement and support, and yet another space where counselors can identify student needs and provide appropriate resources for holistic student development and success. During recent Connection Cafes, students have engaged around the theme of parenting and fatigue, sharing strategies for both with each other, as well as obtaining additional strategies for role management, energy management, and nervous system regulation in light of the pandemic. A student recently shared with us that she was previously enrolled in a private online institution and shared that this was the first time she had experienced a college that provided a space for community care, which made her feel very supported. Counselors are also committed to providing wraparound support, which means that we link students to internal and external resources for a variety of needs that may arise during the course of a student's journey at Calbright. Internal referrals include tutoring and accessibility services. External referrals could include our partner WellConnect and organizations that provide support for basic needs. Next slide, please. Though this slide is simple, the process behind it is not. We have made exceptional progress advancing an integrated learning and student support model, which consists of a cross-functional team. This means weekly CRM collaborative team meetings focused on pace and progress, data-informed targeted student campaigns, and using student feedback to make adjustments. We are tracking data, especially the early part of the student experience, because it's predictive of student success. We will continue to build on this throughout the student lifecycle. Additionally, we are continuously reviewing institutional effectiveness data, especially the early part of the student journey. Again, I want to take the time right now to just thank our team. We are not a siloed institution. This is an integrated learning support model. It's a cross-functional team made up of marketing, communications, technology, enrollment services, both our instructional faculty and our academic success faculty, our career and academic support services, and our student engagement specialists. And I want to thank them for their hard work and their team effort, all in support of student success. Next slide, please. This slide is an example of how we think about where enhancements are needed the most. We use data, again, and student feedback from a variety of sources, such as Indacore Survey, student feedback from the Student Slack channel, to proactive outreach, industry advisory council feedback, and subject matter experts as well to make program enhancements. This slide details the fact that we've surveyed students to make enhancements to Course One of our CRM program. We contacted students by phone, text, email, and sent electronic surveys to, again, gather as much data as we can on the student experience to make improvements and enhance the overall program, both the content as well as the technology behind the program itself and just the student journey overall. So thank you, and I will take any questions that the board may have as well.
Thank you for that presentation. I have a hand up, Vice President Costa.
Thank you. That was really fascinating. There are a lot of acronyms. So what is SAA? And I would just tell people, be mindful of acronyms. Like, I know you like living this and breathing this, but that's down for the rest of us. Thanks.
That is, an SAA is a substantive academic activity. So that's how we track student pace and progress.
Are there other questions? So I would just add an exclamation point to acronyms. Just remember that we are, in many cases, layfolks relative to these. And so I understand that President Biden actually hates acronyms too. So I feel like we're, at least me, I'm in good company when I ask for us to, at least in the first one, to give us the full name of something. It's just very helpful, because we end up pausing on that and just trying to figure out what in the heck is going on. So with that, and no other comments, I did not ask for public comment on the first information item 5.1. I understand there is no public in this meeting, but I am going to ask nonetheless, on this item, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
All right. Thank you so much. Then we're going to go to item 5.3, which is Reports on Contracts and Purchases. And we have a new member to our team, Akor Veridara-John. I'll get better, I swear I will with the last name.
You can take your time on that. Thank you very much for the introduction. Happy to be a part of Calbright. This is an agenda item that's a part of the board policy, and it's the current practice of Calbright to bring before you the contracts that have been executed and the purchases that happened in the prior month. In this case, it's January. So I'll just open it up to you. You're used to this item coming every month to you. So just the contracts that have been executed and the purchases that have happened.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions from any of our trustees? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
Well, then, thank you so much. And we can then, there is no, this is an information item, so there's no vote on this. We're going to move to item 6.1, which is the Calbright Academic Senate Report, and we have Michael Stewart with us.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing? Hold on one second. This meeting kind of moved a little faster than normal today.
Yeah.
Right? I'm impressed. So good afternoon, President Haines and members of the board. My name is Michael Stewart, and I'm the president of Calbright's Academic Senate, and I'm here to give you an update of what the Senate has been doing since the beginning of the year. Academic Senate is in the process of developing suggested policies and procedures for course development. In order to achieve our goal, the Academic Senate is committed to work within the shared governance framework that has been established at Calbright College. And during this policy development process, our Academic Senate is committed to include all representatives of the college and their constituencies by these decisions. I'm looking forward to develop a flexible process for moving our new courses from authoring to enrollment as quickly as possible. And we're looking to achieve this so that we can meet our mandate that's required by us to have all of our courses up and running by a certain time. So that's what the Academic Senate is working on now. We've developed some policies and procedures, and we'll be working closely with Ajita to help to see where we could use those in the college. And I think I have another thing about, and also working to look at different LMSs that we could use to achieve this, right? Because we want to make sure that we create and have the correct LMS and the best LMS to help our students move forward, so that we could help with attrition in our retention rate, and also to develop more interactive courses within these LMSs.
So thank you for that report. I do have the LMSs, would you please?
Learning Management System.
Ah, thank you.
Sorry. Oh, the acronyms, right?
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And our next item is 6.2, but there is no report from the Calbright Faculty Association for this meeting. So we're going to now move into closed session. We have two items in closed session, on the closed session agenda. The first one is the conference with the labor negotiator. And then, which is the bargaining, the bargaining unit is Calbright Faculty Association. And then we also have a discussion relative to the bargaining unit, California School Employees Association. And then we have another item, which is Public Employees Discipline/Dismissal and Release. Is there any public comment on the closed session items at this point? And they'll let you also know that we expect to return from closed session in approximately 30 to 40 minutes.
There is no public comment, President Haines.
All right. Then I believe we've been given another link to go into the session. So I'll see you all on the other side. Thank you. So thank you. We have concluded our business in closed session. I have one decision that the executive committee voted unanimously to non-renew an academic employee for the next academic year. And that was, again, a unanimous vote. So with that, we are now going to move to our action items. And so the first one is item 4.1, which is the Professional Services Agreement for Comprehensive Marketing Services. And we have Brendan O'Callaghan, who will be presenting on the item.
Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. When I joined Calbright in July, I spent time listening and learning, identifying areas of success for the Marketing Communications Department and areas for improvement. And one such area for improvement was our digital marketing, not only in terms of content, but also cost. And so today, after a comprehensive RFP, that's a request for proposals process, I am pleased to present a contract for a new marketing firm. Vision Point, the firm is a firm that focuses on higher education marketing, especially enrollment. It'll be a key partner for Calbright as we expand upon the successful components of campaigns we've already launched, and look to identify new opportunities and ways to reach our focused population of learners. In addition to being a good partner for us, this 16-month contract represents a monthly expenditure that is less than half of what we were spending with our previous firm. And so today, I'm seeking your approval through June. And so today I'm seeking your approval through June of 2023, the conclusion of our fiscal year, for a not too big budget of 261,000. Though it is my intention to actually spend 251,000 on this project, the $10,000 difference provides some little room to purchase additional creative hours if necessary. So in addition, since we're in the middle of our fiscal year, I'm asking the board to authorize the expenditure of 600,000 in ad purchases through the end of September. This will provide the college with the flexibility to conduct business in the short term. And my long-term intention is to build our ad purchases into Calbright's holistic budget for the next fiscal year, which will be presented to the board in September, if I have my dates correct. To be transparent, my plans are to spend less than 600,000, but do you want to be prepared with budget on hand should there be a need to increase our advertising endeavors? This is also a reflection that we are an institution that is growing and doing so to statewide level. Since July, our enrollment has grown from 481 students to more than 900. And during this period, we've been able to analyze our outreach and determine what's working, what's not. And perhaps most importantly, how we can increase the efficiency of our endeavors. A critical component of this growth has been that our demographic numbers continue to reflect Calbright's mission. More than half identify as Black or Latino. The median age of our learners is late 30s. More than half have no education beyond the high school diploma and a third are parents or caregivers. Forty percent are currently unemployed and more than 30% have shared that they recently lost their job or had their hours reduced. While these numbers tell us we're on the right track, there's more to be done. And I'm excited to partner with Vision Point to strengthen our outreach. I'd like to, for example, build region-specific campaigns to speak directly to students, recognizing that the labor market in the Central Valley is different than the labor market in the inland empire and to do more testing so we can continue to refine how we talk about Calbright and its unique model of education. So Vision Point has a proven track record of supporting institutions that serve similar populations of learners. It's a minority woman-founded agency that has helped colleges like Milwaukee Area Technical College, where 66% of students are eligible for Pell Grants, earn their Hispanic-serving institution designation. They've also supported colleges like Northern Virginia Community College, one of the largest community colleges in the country, accelerate outreach to Hispanic communities following their HSI designation. At Nova, it's, I think, pretty creative. They flipped the script a bit on what it means to enroll a community college and launched the Settle for Nova campaign, which resulted in a substantial lift in brand sentiment in a highly competitive local higher education market. Also, and I wanted to address this head-on here, I've had multiple conversations with Vision Point regarding Calbright's focus on diversity, equity and inclusion. And one of the things I was really happy to hear in those conversations was that earlier this year, after unanimous approval by their board, the firm engaged with an external advisory committee that will focus on internal hiring of diverse talent. This priority will further complement the team's exceptional work history, engaging with underrepresented learner populations across the country. You know, what we're doing at Calbright lacks precedent, but our enrollment growth and student demographic data is a strong indication of one right track. Vision Point will be embedded with Calbright's marketing communications department and guided by my diverse team. And also, and I'll just end with this, you know, critically important here is that as we develop new marketing strategies and assets, we need to collaborate across the college to ensure perspectives from a myriad of departments are included, success, student success, learning and instruction, technology, just to name a few. And so that's really going to be a focus of my strategy moving forward internally is to bring in those diverse voices across the college. So thank you. I've been long-winded here, which is just a reflection of my excitement. So I look forward to sharing updates with you in the months ahead and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So thank you, Brendan. Are there any questions from our trustees? Yes, Member Perry.
I just want to say this is exciting. I like this new direction, the way you're thinking. It seems like a really good engagement, the approach. So, so thank you, and I will look forward to, to the results.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Other comments? So let me, oh, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I couldn't find my hand raised. I just have a question about the coordination with the website contractor. Were you just tired? How is that going to work?
Yeah, so that's actually a really exciting thing because what we want to do is develop this website in tandem with our marketing assets so that, say, our paid search marketing works hand in hand with the new content that's going onto our website. And also, you know, Vision Point will be helping develop assets. One of the things I want to do is create kind of informational explainer videos for each program about what enrolling in the program is like and why doing it at Calbright might be a good fit for students and how our model works. You know, this is taking a little bit of what I hear from our student success team where they say, well, these are the 10 questions that we get asked, you know, very commonly. How can we answer those questions upfront as opposed to down further in the funnel, so to speak? And so, you know, that's something that we'll want to do and build into our website build. So the two are talking to each other. And I've had direct conversations with, with both Solid Digital and Vision Points and we're, we're doing these projects. You need, you two need to work together. And they are both very excited for that because it's also increased opportunity for both firms to really build on, on what each other are doing.
That's great. I just, I support this. I think that was an excellent proposal. I did want to point out though, that I did, I went on to their website and looked around and their 14 top executives are all white, all of their VPs, all of their directors. And I was very disappointed in that, you know, given that they say, put simply, promoting diversity and inclusion by targeting the non-white students at the heart of our craft, yet none of their senior talent is non-white. So it's just something to keep an eye on. And I wanted to say for the record.
Yeah, and I very much appreciate that. You know, there are also, you know, limitations to the RFP process and who submits proposals as well. But I will say that in the interview process, one of the things that, you know, I'd say a real differentiator with Vision Point was their past work experience with entities that were moving towards HSI designation. But certainly your point is well taken.
Yeah, I would, I would echo Tom. I think we're, we are very sensitive to that observation as well. It was why Brendan raised it in the RFP process with them. And I think, you know, having a woman of color founder and who is still in a leadership post with them, right? She's the chair of the board of the company and the commitment that they have made at that leadership level for that company about changing the demographics of what's, what's in their organization and their institution, I think, is, is something very promising for us. That combined with the very effective track record in terms of really being able to effectively communicate and introduce an institution to, to variety of different communities that we're aiming to serve better becomes important. So I, I share the, the need and the, and the desire for representation. And I also say that it's, you know, just as important for us to be able to ensure that the work can be reliably performed in a way that, you know, in the way that equity populations deserve. And so, you know, thank you for echoing that. And also, we are, we are certainly have a keen eye towards it. The other thing I will say, and you know me to be a more technical person, but, you know, the one acronym, another acronym I'll throw out there is SEO, which Brendan talked about in relationship to the website and the way in which our marketing activities will occur. And so that, that idea of search engine optimization, what it basically means is how do we reach the communities in the ways that they need to be reached in the way that they're consuming information, through the mediums that they're consuming information? And that is such a critical part of outreach that it is not your momma's marketing, right? It is not blanketting PSA ads. It is not just brand management. It is, it is literally how do we get communication statewide into the hands of the communities that need it? And so this complements a lot of work that we'll want to do and have started to do as we return and level back from pandemic conditions into direct on-the-ground outreach activities. And so, you know, we have plans for both of that, for both of those things. And our plans on the, you know, the direct in-person on-the-ground outreach, outreach work has slowed in recent years because of the pandemic, but we are, we are hopeful conditions are stable enough that we can continue to engage in that way and continue to engage with partners, more importantly, who are that trusted voice.
So thank you for that. Amy, sorry, Vice President Costa.
We're on a first-name basis, Pam. This may not be relevant to this particular contract. I agree with everybody. I think the presentation looks really good. I know we had a very robust RFP process, but kind of as a future state, and I hold what you're saying, Ajita, about we have to make sure that, you know, who we ultimately choose can actually do the work. I do think as we mature our contracting processes, we need to think about small and emerging businesses and specifically California-based businesses. Coming out of the pandemic, you know, these are taxpayer dollars. And I do think, you know, we need to be thinking about that more broadly in our contracting processes. And so I just want to put that out there as kind of an editorial comment and maybe a future discussion.
We'll, we'll take that as a bit of direction actually, because we, you know, it's, it's the same thing that's important to us. You know, having roots and connection to, to individuals, to communities, to partners, to vendors in California is something that's really important.
And I would just highlight small businesses. I mean, I really do think that, you know, in government contracting, there is a role to play in creating a trajectory for minority women-owned businesses that are trying to kind of launch a business for themselves. So that would be the only thing I might add.
Yeah. And if I might add there, you know, I agree. I don't, I don't want to, you know, limit the Calbright in the future, but I will say that the, the RFP process itself does present some limitations in general as to who has the bandwidth to submit proposals. And that's a limiting part of the RFP process, unfortunately. This is something that we need to think creatively about.
So thank you for this discussion. I want to add my two cents for whatever two cents is worth in these days with high inflation as it is. And, and let me say that I read the proposal from front to back and, and underlined and highlighted it. So I am pleased with what this particular company is doing, what it's done across the country. But I too recognize that, you know, I went online to look to see what, if there were other principles that were not being identified. And so as, as Vision Works moves to integrate, diversify and be, and be inclusive in its hiring, what I will also be looking at is to what extent those positions will lead to being a principal in the organization. It's one thing to front face with folks of colors, another thing to promote and encourage that through promotion, that integration of, of thinking that is embedded within the, the specialists that will be going out and doing the marketing for, for Calbright. And it's also in recognition that we, we sit in California as one of the most diverse, one of the most diverse states in the country. And, and then we also, here at Calbright, that diversity is amplified in who our student population is. And while, I'll just note one percentage, while California has around a 6% African-American population, it is still the fifth largest population in the country outside of the South. And so, and that is reflected, and maybe, maybe not so much given that we're increasing in our population, but it is reflected in some of our numbers of African-Americans who have come to Calbright for, for their, their training. And, and that says a lot. It says a lot relative. I think it was somewhere around 28 or 29% at one point. Not, not while that may have changed, it is a heck of a lot bigger than the 6% that is reflective in the state. And so, again, I'm excited about this marketing endeavor. And I'm hoping that we can continue this work with Vision Works. And I really, I took to heart some of the, the, what they said in, in their, in their presentation in terms of the writings of their presentation. And I look forward to seeing that reflected in the complexion of the company. So with that, I don't see any other comments. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Then can I get a motion for approval in a second?
I'll move to approve, Rawlings.
Rawlings approved.
Second, Grande.
Grande, second. So would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi. And President Haynes, do we need to take public comment on this?
I asked, I asked already.
Okay.
There are public comment. Thank you. But thank you for the reminder. Go ahead.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolena Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to item 4.2, which is the Calbright College's COVID-19 Prevention Program Resolution. And we have Carmen Drummond, Chief of Staff, presenting.
Thank you, President Haynes. Good afternoon, Vice President Costa and trustees of the board. Today I present resolution number 2022-4 for your approval and adoption, which would provide the authority and direct to the president and CEO, Ajita Menon, or a designated to develop and implement a COVID-19 plan. At the Board of Trustees meeting on January 25th of this year, we presented the COVID-19 Prevention Plan for the board's consideration. During that meeting, the board gave clear direction of their expectations for specific COVID-19 policies to bring back to today's board meeting. And we are accordingly providing proposed policy language for your consideration. Calbright is committed to providing a safe and healthy workplace for all employees. Although we work in a virtual online environment with limited in-person interactions, we will develop a plan and implement that to include policies and procedures to minimize the risk of transmission of COVID-19. This will be done in accordance with the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA's emergency temporary standards and the direction given by the board. We are committed to working closely with the collective bargaining units and any of their appropriate constituencies as we deal with questions in the coming weeks and months related to the development and implementation of changes to the COVID-19 program. You know, we will also do this in consideration of the constantly evolving nature of the pandemic and adjust and amend as needed, given that changing guidance at all levels. So today we have Tracy Green, Calbright's HR consultant, who joined us at the January board meeting. She's been instrumental in supporting us with the development of this plan. And we're both available to answer any questions that you may have. So let me go ahead and open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on the resolution or on the presentation? Seeing none from our, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Tom?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to say one thing. I support the resolution. But I would like, when we communicate this, even though it's not part of the resolution, but when we communicate it throughout the college, that we encourage students and staff to get boosted. That I know that's not part of the California Department of Public Health definition at the moment of fully vaccinated, but I think it would be helpful if we at least express that in the sidebar communication that goes along with this.
So thank you for that. I would add my support of that nationally. I think only 24 to 25% of Americans are boosted who have had the two-shot or one-shot regimen. So with that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. So can I get a, a motion and a second to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, we have Epstein moving and we have Perry seconding. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolena Grande.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. Thank you. We are now on the last action item, which is four point three, the Signatory Authority for the interim CFO, and we have Carmen Drummond presenting on this item as well.
Thank you, President Haynes. So today, I present a request for authorization of Calbright's interim chief financial officer, Akor Baradaran, to be a signatory on Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury. At the February third Board of Trustees Executive Committee Special Meeting, Akor was appointed as the interim chief financial officer. On April eighth of two thousand and nineteen, at the Executive Committee Meeting Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash zero five was adopted, establishing Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury. Per Education Code Sections eight five two three two and eight five two three three, Calbright is responsible for filing verified signatures of each person authorized to sign orders against the accounts in Calbright's name. Currently, president and CEO Ajita Menon is the only signatory on behalf of Calbright. On August eleventh, two thousand and eleven, the board authorized Chief Financial and Administrative Officer Jeff Bell to act as a signatory on Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury. Akor is now Calbright's interim chief financial officer, who needs to be authorized to act as a signatory on Calbright's accounts. Today, we request your approval to authorize interim chief financial officer, Akor Baradaran, as a signatory on Calbright's accounts in the Solano County Treasury.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this, this item? I don't see any hands raised. Is there any public comment on the item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. Then can I get a motion and a second to approve this item?
Move approval. It's member Grande.
Grande moves, and who gave the second?
Rawling second.
Rawling second. So would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
I.
Amy Costa.
I.
Tom Epstein.
I.
Jolena Grande.
I.
Pam Haynes.
I.
Jennifer Perry.
I.
Bill Rawlings.
I.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
So, thank you so much for that. We've concluded the action items. We are now into public forum. Is there any public who wishes to address the board?
There is no public comment.
Given that, and I'm so happy we get, I get to say that the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can adjourn. I want to thank my colleagues for moving through the agenda. I think, I think we did it efficiently, but also did the business of the board. So have a wonderful day.